I pledge allegiance to the back of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Mark, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Bukovich. Alderman Doherty.
Here.
Alderman Galhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Lerman Schmelzling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw. You have a quorum.
Very much. A public comment Glendale residents, business owners, property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? I'm not seeing anyone in the council chambers. If there's anyone joining us on Zoom that wishes to speak to a non-agenda item, you may unmute and state your name and address, please. All right, no public comment. We'll move on consent agenda. We have two items, the adoption of the minutes for our last meeting and the approval of the monthly reports. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
Oh.
Move Alderman Galhard, second of Alderman Schmelzling. Any discussion? Okay, we'll consider the consent agenda approved without objection, hearing no objections will move on to old business. Consideration of a request for general and specific development plan and development agreement for a planned development district for forty-one sixty North Port Washington Road. This has been before us. It's gone to the Planning and Architecture Review Commission. Had its public hearings, it's come back to us, and I think this is the final step, and I will turn it over to Mr. Fellows to walk us through where we are this evening, please.
Thank you very much. So a bit of an update for you on this particular project. So at the end of your report, I had done, provided you a little bit of a summary since Friday afternoon, and today I've talked to the developer, Mr. Monroe. And in front of you, you have a paper copy of the development agreement with some red lines. So the original development agreement did include the Milwaukee Police Department as a use. My understanding from an email was that they didn't want it in there, so I took it out, but Brian can. So that's what went out in your packet. Brian and I talked, he did actually want it in there, so we've placed it back into the development agreement. He did indicate that the police department would need temporary container storage on the site. So we have added that as sub paragraph B on page two. With regard to that particular paragraph, the way I drafted it, which is acceptable to Mr. Monroe, first time for you guys to see it. Is that they will require planning commission approval. They'll have to provide a site plan and a security plan of how they're going to be secured, where they're going to be. Screening, location, those types of things, and that the development agreement, you know, I wanted it to clearly state that they were temporary. So that they, they go away when the, the police, temporary police headquarters goes away. And then there's some numbering items on C, D, and E. And then the other part of that development agreement was a conversation about a potential future sidewalk on Olive Street. Mr. Monroe wasn't quite happy with the way it was originally drafted, so that would be item L on page four. And it's been rewritten to say any expansion of the existing building footprint, new buildings, or the expansion of any parking area shall trigger that sidewalk to be installed. So as long as there, the site state remains the way it is, and they just have new users going in and out of the existing building, with maybe some minor modifications of a door or window or something that would not be triggered. And then with regard to the performance bond, this section is on page five. It's a little bit different than what you typically see. Usually we have new construction. There's a performance bond, which is twenty-five percent of new construction. In this case, we already have existing buildings, existing tenants, so we've kind of customized it so that there's a section, paragraph A is a performance bond that basically is not required as long as they have the existing users. And then paragraph B. Basically, if they go in with the police department, that or the, and the storage containers, they don't need a performance bond, but if they were to trigger subsection Bs, which would be sub C, D, and E, or item section C, that would be triggered, which would, those would be all like expansions of the building footprint, those types of things. So I just wanted you to bring up to speed with that. And then just to, for clarity, in your packets, the attachments were not there, but we're going to, basically, we have to send out the original plans to get scanned, but we'll have the original landscaping plan, the original building plans from a number of years ago when all of that was redeveloped. So that's how that will get captured.
Oh, so what would be in here are the ones that we here or at the planet?
Correct, from over a decade ago, yes.
Okay. All right, it's all open up now to any questions from members of the commission. Alderwoman Bukovich, microphone.
I'm, this is, I, I may be thinking incorrectly, but previously when this, the site was going to be sold. There was some issues with the, if I'm not mistaken, with the retention pond. And they would have had to do a lot of, of, uh, they would have had to do a, or it also, um, other things that were inconsistent or wasn't done previously, and that's why. That's one of the reasons why they pulled out because it would cost so much money. If I, and I'm just trying to remember correctly. Has those things been rectified before we do all this or give all these things? Cause there were some things that should have been done.
I under.
I just wanna understand if I'm wrong, then.
We're gonna build an addition, and that would have required the stormwater retention pond. I don't believe the existing building requires anything additional, but correct me if I'm wrong, if they build an addition as, as indicated here as potential, then that would require stormwater improvements per the DNR. Is that correct?
Correct. So if there's any expansion of the parking lot, a new building or a building addition that would trigger stormwater review, which would require, the current pond would not have capacity, so they would have to build a bigger pond on site. What Metahouse was doing was trying to figure out if the pond down the street, which is owned by the city, if the water could be transferred through the pipes over to that one. There's a lot of time spent on that. That was not possible. In the process of that, what I had heard back from a variety of consultants, which I'm, this is not from Mr. Monroe, so it is from, you know, kind of third party people that the current detention pond that is there kind of parallel to Olive Street. Then it actually wasn't constructed deep enough, so it actually doesn't have the original capacity that was, you know, if you go to look at the approved plans, and apparently either it's silted in or it wasn't deep enough to begin with. I'm, I'm not sure it's been there for so long. I'm not sure anybody actually knows what the case is. But it is a fairly shallow pond. So any new development would, would require, this probably depending on the footprint, a fairly substantial pond and stormwater regulations have changed over the last, you know, number of decades, so. And Mr. Monroe, I believe is respond differently.
I, I just wanted to make sure that it was in compliance with what we need right now. I mean, for what was going on right now, even if you don't have, even if you don't have any new construction, making sure that it's in compliance now for whatever is there now. That's what I wanna, so you saying it's in compliance and, and it's good to go? Cause he's not.
I got the impression that it was not from the plans that were submitted and what's out there. The engineer had indicated it, they don't match up, so I don't really, I'd rather, I, I'm not, I don't wanna put the hat on an, of an engineer and say that the prop, the stormwater pond is not compliant with, with what was originally approved, but something's different out there is, I'm, is what I'm comfortable indicating.
But Mr. Fellows, they're compliant with the stormwater retention plans because they are not making any alterations to the building of the parking lot, correct?
Correct. They have a stormwater pond and they have their original plans. What I guess I'm trying to say is somehow what the engineers saw in the field and what they saw in those original plans did not match up, and that was, there was many, many calls trying to figure out what was actually going on and.
But we don't.
Because Metahouse backed out, I think that, that, that discussion just sort of ended, so I don't know if it actually came to a conclusion.
But none of that stuff needs to be reviewed unless a expansion or a new building is put up, correct?
Well, it is their requirement to maintain that stormwater pond. So I mean, if, if there's a stormwater maintenance agreement. And I mean hypothetically, if you have a pond and it silts in, it's supposed to hold so much capacity, so it is up to the property owner to maintain it, so. It wouldn't be something that would get reviewed here. It would be kind of.
We're talking about a maintenance activity, not a part of an.
Correct.
Process. So yeah, everything is in compliance with the way the plan is being described in the agreements.
Hold the floor. Do you have any other?
How would it be if it's not, if ultimately it's not found a compliance, how's that get remedied? Is that a?
It's essentially, it'd be an administrative type function where if the city engineer found that a pond had silted in and it needed to be dredged, as an example, there'd be directives to do that. Most of the stormwater documents will actually say if the property owner doesn't do it on their own, that the city can come in and actually do it, which I don't think anyone really wants the city to do, because it's probably gonna cost them more than if they hire a contractor themselves, but that's usually the language in there. So usually they'll, they'll be given a certain amount of time and it's seasonal, so you're not gonna, there's part of the year you're gonna dredge, so probably, you know, it'd be a number of months to get it resolved.
He goes trying to get at making sure, right at the end. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we do have then a recommendation from staff for, that we approve the general and specific development plan as amended, subject to common counsel entering into a development agreement with the property owner. So they still recommend approval, so could I get a motion then to approve the development agreement as presented? And subject to the developer providing the appropriate documents for the exhibits to staff prior to signatures and recording.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Bailey. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Alderman Doherty. I thought you were going for it there for one. Okay. So second by Alderman Doherty, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the development agreement, and I will withhold signature until those other documents are added, so could I get a motion, or all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close?
No.
Okay, the motion carries on a vote of five to one. All right, the next item on our agenda. It is moving on now to new business. And that is review and possible action on a contract addendum for GCA Geo-Environmental Services, and I will turn it over to City Administrator, Mr. Warwick. Microphone is not on there, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. I'll turn this over to Director Public Works, Mr. Emig, to run through the explanation on this contract addendum.
Think I'm on. There we go. All right, yes, this is, we did this in two thousand twenty-one. You all approved a three-year contract with GZA, so this is another three-year contract with them. They do all of our environmental testing for out at the park. Got the trees approved to go in at the park. They do as well a part of our waterman projects. We have any hazardous material, subsoil, that things like that. So GZA is our environmental consultant for those items. So this is again a contract for three years.
Alderman Doherty?
So essentially, this is an ongoing expense forever. I mean, you pardon me? That park will always have to have this kind of monitoring.
Yes, we have to monitor for as long as it's there, unfortunately.
And it's paid out of the environmental fees that are collected on the utility bill.
Other questions? Alderwoman Shaw?
Have we been happy with their service?
Yes, in fact, we had heirs and associates previously, and we were not happy, and that's why we got GZA, who's done work for us before, so yes, we are happy with their services.
Any other questions? All right, we do have a recommendation from staff that we have a motion to approve the contract with GZA Geo-Environmental for a three-year period and the amount of forty-two thousand four hundred dollars. Can I get a motion, please?
Moved.
Move by Alderman Doherty.
I'll do the second.
Second by Alderman Schmelzling. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. And the next is a memorandum of understanding outlining procedures for provision of emergency water supply to the village of Shorewood when the primary source of water supply is unable to meet demand, and Charlie, you stayed put, so I assume this is right back.
Two more items, I'll just stay, I'll stay put for a bit. Yes, this actually was in front of you all in twenty twenty, when there, there's two, two connections from Milwaukee Water to Shorewood. So they're replacing, I think, the second valve this time. So this is a surety in case anything happens that they could, could use the interconnect with Whitefish Bay, which is the North Shore Water Commission as a, as a backup plan.
Played a bit of.
Yes, and this all has to be signed as well with the other North Shore Water Commission's members, so this would go in front of Whitefish Bay's board and then Fox Point's board as well.
Okay, Alderman Doherty, go ahead.
May have missed it. If it happens, do they pay for the water?
Yes.
Okay.
It is metered, correct? Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, we have a recommendation from staff that we approve the MOU to provide emergency water supply when the primary source of water is unable to meet demand in the village of Shorewood. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
They'll moved.
Moved by Alderman Galhard, seconded by Alderman Bailey. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no? Carries? The next is an agreement with MMSD for reimbursement for private property infiltration, inflow, and reduction. This is for eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars and for the project in the Clovernook neighborhood, I believe, correct?
Correct.
I remember from my last MMSD meetings.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Charlie, go ahead.
So this, yeah, so this is to replace, I, I don't have the number in front of me, but it's in the, it's in the packet of how many laterals, private laterals for inflow and infiltration. It also, on Apple Tree, there are three houses that direct connect to the MMSD's MIS, which they're not fans of, so they're also paying for that to allow the city to construct a sanitary sewer line to take those three homes off. So again, this is all reimbursable through that. So again, this is an update to the original contract that we had, so an addendum to it.
Any questions from?
Just curious why this place was selected for that, you know, funding is, is there, it looks like it's also kind of connected with what's going on with Nicolay.
It's, well, it really has nothing to do with Nicolay. It's just identified areas of infill, inflow and infiltration, so we've done this through testing through them, which is paid for by MMSD, so this area came in high with that, so we're in the Clovernook neighborhood, not to add more to Alderman Galhard's plate, but, uh, so hopefully alleviate some issues, so that's why we selected.
Right, I was curious if there's like some synergies with doing it all at the same time, but okay, so it's just because that's where there's.
No, we, yeah, we, there's a lot of other things that are scheduled for Clover, but we're kind of we're pushing us off a little bit, so, yeah, it's kind of baby stuff, but yeah, this is, this is less intrusive, I'll say.
The, the PPII funds actually are utilized for replacement of sewer laterals on private property. But it typically tends to align with older housing stock, and a lot of the homes in Clovernook were built in the twenties, thirties, forties. And so they, we're, we're needing to redo the, the sewers, water and sewer lines. This is a full reconstruction of the roads anyway. And so this allows us to tap into that funds and actually connect onto the private property and, and replace those laterals. At the same time, we only dig it up once that way. Makes the project a little bigger, but there, we don't have to do it multiple times, so.
Said, thank you, just was curious about the process. And of course, now you get your front yards torn up as well.
We had that a few years ago when they were redoing the roads, but yeah, what the heck, so.
All right, any other questions? All right, can I get a motion then to approve the memorandum of understanding with MMSD?
Moved.
Or sorry, the funding agreement with MMSD. Yep, moved by Alderman Galhard is our second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Doherty. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Next item, I think now we're going over to the chief for these next few. This is an allocation of two thousand eight hundred ninety dollars from the asset forfeiture fund for a police interview camera, chief.
Yes, the city, police department, DPW all uses the same camera system for our internal external and our doors. And what we would like to do is purchase a camera for our interview room. When we redid the garage, they had an empty space there. We turned that into a secure interview room. But we've never been able to have the access for security cameras in there, so we'd like to spend two thousand eight hundred ninety dollars through engineered security solutions for a camera in there, and it'll be paid for out of our asset forfeiture fund.
Questions?
If I could just make a comment real quick, Mayor, we, we did budget seventeen thousand dollars for unallocated purposes within this fund. This would simply take a portion of that seventeen thousand dollars and allocate it towards a specific purpose like the next agenda item would as well.
All right, any further questions? Okay, we do have a recommendation from staff that we approved the purchase of the camera. Can I get a motion to approve, please? Move Alderman Shaw's or second? Second by Alderman Bukovich. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. And the next item is allocation of eleven thousand and twenty-five dollars for a portable police speed trailer.
Yes, as you're aware, we have twelve speed cameras throughout the city. They're falling apart. We can't get our data out of them very well. And the other issue that we're running into is we get a lot of complaints for speeders where there's not cameras, and it's a big pain to move them, so we would like to spend eleven thousand and twenty-five dollars of our asset forfeiture account to buy a very nice portable speed trailer that we can put on any one street that will hopefully help mitigate the speeding.
Those kinds with the interface, that you know, if you're going twenty-nine in a thirty, it just says twenty-nine, but if you're going thirty-five in a thirty, it starts flashing.
Well, and then it's, and it's what's even nicer, it's, it's got red and blue lights on top, so if you hit a certain everyone thinks it's a squad car sitting there, so.
That's great.
They're pretty nice, so. Yeah, so we like to, again, this comes off our asset forfeiture account, and like Carl said, there was seventeen thousand dollars unallocated for it, so we pretty much used our limit pretty close.
Right, any questions? Alderman Schmelzling?
But one thing I, I have to drive up to Bayside all the time to drop off my son, and I noticed their signs are a little bit more, I would say, friendly in the sense that they say, you know, thank you for slowing down, and some of those, ours aren't that fancy. Is, is there options to add that? Cause that would help with behavior change instead of just scaring people with flashing lights? Maybe encourage them to be like, please slow down and.
Or to our, our, our current.
I was thinking more for the, this one, like if we're purchasing one, that could be a little more.
I do not know if, if it, what the message board is. I believe there can be certain things that are put in there, but I don't know how much, so.
Yeah, I, I did a quick look just, and it was, uh, yeah, just thinking about it more holistically, you're looking for behavior change, so, you know. Sometimes honey goes further than vinegar. So I don't know if there's an option to look into one of those instead that has that feature, that might be something to think about long term or for this one.
Thank you, Alderman Doherty.
I looked at this too. I don't recall. There was something in that, but I did like the fact that this is the one, it's one of the ones that's approved by the state. If you go by, we want individually out to get this, it's about eighteen grand. And the write-up on it looked very good. I first thought that seems like a lot, but after I read through it and looked at other options, that is the kind of money these go. The idea of being nice about it is good, but I'm more excited we're getting one because I've got some situations and on Fairfield and some places where people really complain a lot about speed and moving signs in the winter is not really possible with our current setup, so I think this gives us some great flexibility, maybe something to add on to. So I think it's a great idea.
Questions? All right, can we get a motion? Allocation? Move Alderman Shaw's or second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Doherty. Any discussion? Okay, call for a vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carried. And the next item is an agreement and payment for City Hall and Police Department's security camera support services with Engineered Security Solutions.
So I'll take this one. So the chief, Mark, and I were researching options for updates and some security enhancements to our current security system here at the City Hall and the Police Department. Well, we talked about getting updates from the company. They made it known that we have never executed an agreement for any maintenance or paid any services that we were supposed to for the cameras in the past and then moving forward. So before you is the authorization to execute a secure agreement for maintenance on the, on the camera system, and then back payment of sixty-seven hundred dollars for software support catch-up. And then the annual fees going forward would be two thousand eight hundred and ten dollars annually. We do have some contingency in the budget that we would use towards these payments.
Ask them to always pay three years late?
Any other questions? Alderman Schmelzling?
I, I was just curious, so this was something that we were contracted to pay the service at the time, or is this more something they just like typically do, but they didn't do it with us, and now we're kind of on the lurch for it?
Well, I believe we're receiving support and then the software that was required to go along with it. I am not sure how we got three years down the road and never executed agreement or paid anything. Chief Ferguson might have some more background on that, cause he talked about it. Exactly.
All, all I can tell you is these cameras were put in with the construction of City Hall. And it was handled by a previous employee, and no one really had any clue that they either weren't being paid or that there was any contract or not a contract. So this was sort of a surprise when they called up for the camera system and they said, well, by the way, you owe us for back support.
Yeah, let's just get, get whatever that fee is contracted and find that, so we don't find out two years later they're asking for something different. That would be my only recommendation, but it seems like it's reasonable because these are updated cameras and they, they probably come with support. I'm assuming other vendors have similar types of service contracts.
We were making the assumption that they were being paid, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I assume I know. Out of curiosity, did they not say send any past due notices for three years?
So when we, when we did this, we dealt with one of their, their, their people all the time. He's the same person that would come in and set us up, and if we had questions, we would call him. So it was always through him, and then this was brought up by the, the company president who found that out, so he's the one that determined that we had not been paying anything. So whether it was a mishap, mislight from their employee, or it was on our end, I, I cannot tell you.
All right, we do have a recommendation. We have a recommendation from staff that we have a motion to approve the payment of the software and the catch-up fees. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Moved.
Move Alderman Galhard. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bailey. Any further discussion?
One more question.
Yes, Alderman Shaw, go ahead.
Did they charge us any, any back fees for neglecting to pay the invoice?
No, this was, what, what this is here is saying, this is what the back fee should have been. And then they rolled it in and said, this is what the fees are going forward, so.
Or no penalties?
No penalties, no.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, aye?
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Next item, item five G. This is an agreement, an amendment to the Attorney Services Agreement with Curvello, Nichols, and Hall. And I will turn it over to Mr. Warwick.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. I'll do a quick introduction before I turn it over to Attorney Bear. The city, two years ago, executed an agreement with the law firm for attorney services for three years with an hourly rate built into that agreement. So the agreement expires at the end of this year, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Attorney Bear asked the city to reconsider the hourly rate for twenty twenty-four and exchange would lock in the rates for twenty twenty-five and hopefully level off some of the costs moving forward. This is not an obligation that we have to do, but hopefully a consideration to lock in a lower rate than what we would see in twenty twenty-five if we did not. So I'll turn it over to Attorney Bear if he has any further questions or comments about this.
Thank you. So as you mentioned, it's been my privilege to work with the city for a couple of years now, and when I, when I first looked at responding to the RFP, at that time, I spoke with your former city attorney, who was actually here this evening. And I found out that, that it was on a flat fee for a number of years. And at the time, you know, that there was some fluctuation of the amount of hours that were, you know, had to be devoted, but depending on what was going on, and that those fluctuated quite a bit as well, and my concern at the time was if I'd bid it at full market, you know, going market rates on an hourly, there, there might be some sticker shock, and I might be, at the end of the first year, that might be the end of the relationship. So I, I, I made a conscious decision to bid it on, you know, a little lower than that because, because of the transition from flat fee to hourly in the hopes that I'd make a commitment to the city and say, okay, give you a couple of years to kind of get to know who I am and give me a chance to prove myself. And then ask, ask for an adjustment, and in exchange for that, again, if I would be so privileged enough to, to carry on, it would lock in the, the rate for sort of a structured two-tier raise over a couple of years as opposed to just, you know, having it this year and then, and then potentially, you know, when you rebid it or RFP it or whatever happens and would going up further. So just for some comparison sake, I, I did some research and Whitefish Bay and Bayside has a tiered structure where they start at two hundred an hour, and the rates go up to about three hundred an hour for assistance with active litigation and development. and the rates go up to about three hundred an hour for assistance with active litigation and development work. Fox Point, um, is at two-ten, but they, the firm out of Waukesha charges travel time back and forth for their work as well. Um, River Hills is one of the last ones on a flat fee, but they're non, uh, their work that's not covered by the flat fee is at two forty an hour. North Shore Fire and Rescue is at two twenty-five. And then, uh, if you, I, we, I also have the privilege of working with Brown Deer, which we have a two hundred an hour coming up for this calendar year as well. Um, going back from where we were this year, we, we were asking to, to go to one ninety-five uh, for this year and then, uh, and lock in, uh, two oh five, which, which still keeps the city essentially below market rates of its neighbors moving forward. And I thank you very much for your consideration.
All right. Any questions from members of the council? All right. So the, the term of the city attorney is a three-year term. It expires December thirty-first of this year. So what we're essentially doing is committing, should we reappoint Mr. Bear leader this year to another three-year term? He's committed that next year's rate would be at the two oh five because that's already locked into the agreement. The last two years of that agreement would be subject to negotiation this fall. So I saw a hand from Alderman Shaw.
Kind of answered the question, understanding that it goes up, you know, renewal is in at the end of this year, if we so choose. But also we're still allowed to go out for bidding if that happens to be the choice of the council.
Absolutely.
Nothing to worry about you and to understand the process, even though I've been on here forever now, but with respect. I know I, I'm, I will say I'm one of the ones that I'm still personally, um, indebted to the former city attorney.
And that, that language is expressly included in the, uh, in the amendment that, that it's, that is, it's contingent. Um, it's contingent upon reappointment. And if not, then it's, it is essentially moot for, for twenty twenty-fives.
All right, Alderman Schmelsing, go ahead.
Look, just looking at the rough numbers here, you know, that's about fifteen percent bump up, but you didn't get anything the last year. So it's seven and a half and you're under market rate. So it seems reasonable to me. And then moving forward, it's five percent. Of course, staff only got three and a half percent. So in Alderman's, we don't get anything. So, but, uh, but yes, I think it, it seems reasonable to me.
All right, we'll just call on them fifteen percent less time. Then that's the, the plan.
All right. Can we get a motion then to approve the amended attorney agreement, uh, to include the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five rates?
Alowed.
Move Alderman Galhard, second, second Alderman Doherty. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor are approving, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is an agreement for design and construction engineering for the city's twenty twenty-four road resurfacing water main replacement pedestrian improvements, alley rehabilitation program with Clark Deets not to exceed five hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. And I don't know if the city administrator or the city engineer is speaking to that. So.
Um, I will start off. Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. Um, and there is one adjustment that needs to be made to that number. Um, we, we went back and forth on the streets and the water mains to be replaced. And the amount of, of work increased, um, and I forgot to update the memo to six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So the agreement should be not to exceed six twenty-four, um, design. So this concludes design and engineering services for construction um, with Clark Deets for the projects that are listed above.
Oh, the agreement reflects that amount, just the agenda did not reflect that amount in the memo in the agenda.
Correct. We probably had three or four different reiterations of the agreement as we moved towards the right project. And my apologies, we put the correct agreement in there, but forgot to modify the motion and the, um, memo to reflect the new cost of the higher amount of projects that Mustafa and I did discuss why the cost did go up because the, uh, projects increased in, in cost and in scope of service.
Also didn't do projects in this. Already eight major projects going on between the state, the fire department, the school, the county, you name it. Everybody else was doing work in Glendale. So we didn't add any more orange barrels to the pain. Uh, Mr. Ramir, is there any? Is there any more you want to add to that?
Um, no, I, it's, it's gonna be a intense year. Um, as you see, we, we, uh, we're doing about twice as many roads as, as traditional. And, uh, of course, the sidewalks are very exciting. I think it's going to be a huge improvement in our community. So while the interstate is going, we're going to take advantage of.
All right. Any, any questions from members of the council? All right. So we do have a recommendation from staff. The recommendation from staff was that we authorize the city administrator to execute the design and construction engineering agreement, uh, not to exceed six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Can we get a motion, please?
Oh, moved.
Move Alderman Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Schmelsing, discussion, Alderman Doherty?
Just curious, Carl, what did we plan on as far as when we looked in our budget where I don't, I didn't tie this across?
Yeah. So the city council or the common council adopted a five-year capital improvement plan and a budget for these expenses. These engineering services agreements were accounted for when we developed the cost estimate for the projects. Also included in there were the design and construction engineering services for these projects. So provided we come in at or below bid, we will be right on what our budget is.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor of, uh, executing the agreement with Clark Deets for six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And, um, in the past, when we did this type of work, we didn't specifically, uh, ask for your vote and, um, Carl and I are aligned on this. We are going to always come and ask for your specific vote on our spending so that.
You've approved the agreement that you are our city engineer.
Right.
But what we have not approved have been specific projects that you've undertaken and large dollar ones like this, you're going to bring to us.
Okay, all right. So this is our way to be accountable.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. The next item is a planned development district for a general and specific development plan for Phoenix JCR Glendale at fifty fifty-five North Lydell. And I will turn it back over to Mr. Fellows, who I think is up with us now for the next few items.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, so, um, fifty fifty-five Lydell, you, you actually saw back in July and then we had some meetings um, at the end of last year. Um, essentially what you have before you, um, is a request for the, the, to go through with the public hearing for the planned development district. Um, the, um, project, um, has been, uh, more clarified, um, for, you know, the purposes of what they're planning to do. So in the report, it does talk about, um, what is planned for the north part of the parcel and what is planned for the, um, southern portion of the parcel. So I'll start off with the southern portion of the parcel. That's essentially going to remain corporate offices, minor back warehousing, um, existing buildings. Um, there essentially will be, um, a disconnect between the two buildings. Right now it's one big building. They're going to kind of uh, separate into two buildings. So there will be a new wall constructed, but essentially the southern half of the property will remain pretty much as is. The northern portion of the property, um, as, uh, discussed in the report, it is going to, um, include a number of different facilities, but it's going to be, um, uh, have a number of employees from thirty to fifty. Um, the operating hours are probably seven A and of seven PM as stated in the report. Um, and it's going to be a regional center, um, with a tenant that, uh, is to be determined, Phoenix. Carrying, uh, the building as a white box with the exterior and the, the site plan. And then at some point, uh, when they're able to secure a tenant, then they will, uh, come in and the tenant will build out the, the interior part of the facility.
I just have a couple of questions about the memo. Um, tonight's the initial review and the action for us is to schedule a public hearing. It says in our memo for January twenty-second, that would be holding it tonight. I think you mean, and then down further, the action requested is for us to actually have the hearing on March eleventh.
Yeah. So.
And so, but it said in here that all this stuff would happen through February is what's in the timeline.
So I did provide an updated, uh, list to the applicant. I did not update your memo. My apologies. This was actually prepared for your last agenda and, um, for some reason it was prepared for the agenda, but it didn't actually end up on the final agenda. There had been some amendments to the agenda, you might recall, and somehow it got dropped off. Um, so, um, that was the original schedule, um, but the recommendation at the end of the report, uh, is accurate. So all of those dates essentially slide, um, essentially one down. Um, and due to public hearing notices and things, we have to actually, uh, have the public hearing and at the soonest we can have it is March fifth. Um, and then we would, uh,
The plan commission.
At the planning commission and March, March eleventh would be the following week for city council.
Okay. All right. Uh, questions? We'll start with questions first. Alderman Doherty, go ahead.
Department comments, then it'll all be addressed as we go forward, right? There's not.
So we do have comments from, uh, the department. So those are actually in an attachment. Usually I've included them in the report. Uh, there was a thought to include those as a, attachment. Some of those comments were in there. Some are, uh, pending, but as, uh, we move forward, um, those, they should be, there's plenty of time for them to address those prior to, uh, the planning and architectural review commission.
Big items as far as like fire control and some.
Correct. It's all, it's all been communicated to them. I haven't received a new set of plans yet, but they do have, you know, March fifth is, it's not, it's around the corner, but there's.
Well, they certainly develop a lot of property. So.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And I do trust that the fire marshal will make sure that he enforces all of those fire things before signing off on any kind of occupancy.
There.
Right.
And often the plans that go to planning commissioner are sort of still preliminary. They might not have all the details so that some of those conditions will probably carry on until um, building permit stage. And then that's when all those details are provided.
Alderman Schmelsing?
So this is essentially going from a two-story office building that used to be, uh, Manpower Group's corporate headquarters to a single-story use that is, you can kind of read one of the slides and see what it's probably going to be. Um, and that is ultimately thirty to fifty employees. And, uh, that whole back lot, do they have any plans to do anything with that? Cause that's a lot of parking for thirty to fifty employees.
So, um,
Oh, okay. Wonderful. Yes.
So essentially you're correct, Alderman, the, the red brick building, that's the two-story component that would actually be removed from the site. Uh, the building that is on the site plans, that one-story building is the existing one-story portion of that building. So that will just be remodeled. Um, there'll be a smaller parking lot facing Lydell with their detention and stormwater facilities. And then the larger parking lot going towards Port Washington Road will have some improvements. Um, what they intend to use for all of that, um, probably going to be a combination for this use as well as the other users, um, on the southern portion of the property.
And, uh, and it looks like they have in the facade, the main entrance on Lydell now for consumers or, and then it looks like I read truck entrances would be.
So the, the truck traffic will have to come in off of Port Washington Road because Lydell is not a truck route. Um, but my understanding from talking to the, to Phoenix is the front of the building where all the visitors will come, that will actually also be facing west. So essentially, um, the Lydell is um, a pleasant architectural rear of the building facing, um, Lydell with some landscaping.
Okay. I had that wrong when I was looking at it myself.
I, I believe probably that's probably going to be more employee parking back there, but I can't, you know, it'd be kind of a long walk to get all the way to the front lobby that faces west.
Okay. So then that's just more for our, our Whitefish Bay neighbors to make it a little more, um, pleasing over there. All right. I, I guess, uh, the, the way I'm looking at this is this is zoned planned development, right?
You're in the process of rezoning it to the planned development, correct?
Okay. And it, right now it's, it's corporate.
It's in, um, I believe it's M one. No, it's a B. It's a, it's a.
Business.
It's a business dash, something. I can't remember. We have, they go all the way to Q or something. Yeah.
And if I remember correctly, this was in, oh, thank you. And if I remember, this was something that we had highlighted as a redevelopment opportunity as part of our twenty twenty, uh, twenty forty plan.
Correct. As a mixed use area for the whole block.
The whole area. Yeah, that whole unit. So I, I get like, we're probably not going to have many corporate headquarters coming our way, considering all the vacant property downtown for the, uh, um, after the pandemic. Um, but I, I, I guess I just struggle here thinking about what this all could be. It looks like it would be a wonderful place for a nice neighborhood, uh, long-term or something like that for a planned development. Compared to what I'm seeing here. If it's a service center for vehicles, I would think we have plenty of other places that might be more, um, conducive for that long-term. All right. I, I think that's, I'll, I'll listen to what everybody else has to say. Thank you.
Alderman Doherty?
Some environmental concerns. If we tried to do a neighborhood underneath that parking lot, though, that Sunbeam Osters, Sunbeam, oh yeah, Oster's original plant. And there's some issues in the back there. I used to be involved with that company a thousand years ago. So I don't think you could just do anything back in that area.
I don't have my. But, uh,
Haven't heard your voice for a while. Come on.
Who would miss that? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just, just, um, um, there is, um, I, I completely get what Alderman Schmelsing is, is saying. I, I would love to have like this big robust, you know, development. But the issue is it's been sitting for twenty years. Plus, I think Phoenix has owned it for five. Um, previous owners owned it forever. We, I think mayor and I took, at one point we were taking a meeting almost every other week or every cup, I mean, every other month or every couple of months with people coming to do it. But either not having the finance to do it or not having the know-how and it was like smaller pieces and it was only going to take one little part of the building. And the rest of it wasn't feasible to be used because they were only going to use a small part. Um, after eight years of watching this, this sit here. I, I can't, I mean, yes, I would love it to be, uh, a bigger development or something like that, but literally it's been sitting for twenty plus years. And we can't do a lot of development when it comes to, um, from what I understand, it's almost in the same condition as the apartments that were, um, built on Bender where they had to cap it. And they had to, you know, they did something with it, but it was, they had to, because there was something already there, they could use the, um, the foundation or the, yeah. So I guess this is where, um, I'm at with this. Um, so I guess that's all.
This actually, uh, it does go back. This is the original Oster plant when Oster was a Glendale company. It goes back that far. But in terms of uses, uh, Phoenix has not owned it all of that time, oh, roughly five years. Uh, Mr. Wolkowitz is on the line too as well, but, uh, just where we're at right now, so that we don't go, uh, beyond the scope of what's really on the agenda. Uh, you'll get more by way of planning. Once you see the, we get to the plan commission and the public hearing phase. Uh, there are projects that were not brought to you because they wouldn't be good for the city. This project, and we'll make these arguments at the right time, we believe would be in the city's interests. In terms of building a neighborhood, uh, Alderman Doherty was right, there are some issues, not where what we're going to do is doing, but uh, it wouldn't be conducive to a neighborhood. And also you'd be probably, and I don't mean this in any sarcastic or facetious way, but a neighborhood in terms of like, for example, a single-family residential, um, be a long time before the market would drive that. If you were looking for residential there, you could probably get it, but you'd be looking at four stories of apartments or something in today's current markets. So I, I don't want to go.
That. I don't want to go further. Go across the street, there's more, there's more dense, um, even in Whitefish Bay developments.
Considering this is really just for referral to the plan commission and then the scheduling of the public hearing. If we are going to go beyond that, then I also want to visit Alderman Shaw's comments about the city being indebted to me because there would be penalties.
All right. Any, any further questions? All right. So the, the motion before us then would be to refer this to the, uh, Planning and Architecture Review Commission and to direct staff to schedule a public hearing for the March eleventh common council meeting.
Wait a minute, I. The public hearing would be at the plan commission? Or?
To public hearing, yeah, the fifth and the eleventh.
It'll go to the plan commission in a couple of weeks and the plan commission will schedule its own hearing for March fifth. We don't plan, we don't schedule the hearings obviously for the plan commission. So we're, our, our motion here would be to direct it to the Planning and Architecture Review Commission and then to direct staff to schedule the March eleventh council meeting hearing.
No, I, I appreciate the clarification from Mr. Fellows because when I looked at his summary, I too thought the twenty-second, today's the twenty-second, and I would have been grossly unprepared.
I assume, uh.
Okay. Moved by Alderman Vukovich, second by Alderman Shaw. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. So a vote of five. Okay, so a vote of five to one, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is amending, the ordinance amending Title thirteen, Chapter four, Title two, Chapter four, Section four, Title two, Chapter four, Section six. There's a whole bunch of things here. So I would just turn it back over to staff to walk us through the ordinance changes, please. Elvis is getting ready and John Fuchs, I was gonna say Elvis has left the building. And I could, I could say that about Mr. Fuchs. All right, Mr. Fellows, you get this up?
Yeah, so this particular, sorry, my computer had gone to sleep. So in summary, this is an update of the current ordinances to more coordinate with the state statutes. It clarifies that the Planning and Architecture Review Commission is our city planning commission under state statutes. It also enables the historic preservation commission from the zoning code, which enables the boards and commissions. So the, all our boards and commissions are in one part of the code. For some reason, the historic preservation commission was sort of buried in another area. We're bringing that up to the top. And then also, there's in our ordinance, it allows the mayor to be the chairman of the planning commission. But it also allows the option that someone else could be appointed to the chairman of the planning commission. However, the historic preservation commission is required to have the chairman be the planning commission. And it also states that the planning commission is the historic preservation commission. Therefore, if we were to appoint somebody to the position that's not the mayor, then the mayor would have to step in. It gets a little. So as we were reading through it, we're like, we need to just straighten that out so that whenever that day might come, it's clear. So that sort of is taking care of those two items in this particular section. So we went in to check to fix one thing. We discovered a second and we're correcting both.
I appreciate the, ever since we went to municode, I think it's allowed the, a lot more searchability of the code and being able to catch a lot of these errors and things that refer to something and it actually doesn't refer to it. When we only had PDFs, you couldn't correct it as easily. But when you have the hot links in there and they suddenly refer back to something that doesn't make any sense, I appreciate that you're spending the time catching a lot of these and fixing a lot of these things.
Thanks for explaining the paradox. I read it twice and I was a little confused. Thank you.
Not sure my explanation was a little bit of a puzzle there too, but.
All right.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Alderman Schmelzling.
Same, I think, always confused me with how this was structured, so I think it's much better now. So thank you.
We had a question. Joanne, I know you've been on the council for sixteen years. Has anyone other than the mayor ever been the chair of the plan commission, other than the council president filling in for the mayor?
No.
Okay. So it's interesting that we have that provision when our practice, at least for decades now, has been that the mayor always chairs the plan commission. But the mayor could appoint somebody to chair the plan commission?
Uh, yeah, so I mean, I suppose you could theoretically do that, like, let's say you were gonna be really busy for two months or something or three months and, you know, or whatever. Yeah, there's that option in there.
I've had to step out of the room before in a plan commission meeting. I hand the gavel to Fred Cohn because he's been on the commission for twenty years. But we've never really had a.
There's the difference of handing it off in a temporary fashion versus like, you know, the chair is going to be this person now going forward.
Right.
I think there's.
Well, our our ordinances state, though, that the common council president fills in for the mayor whenever the mayor is unable to. And so our practice has always been that if the mayor is unable to attend a Planning and Architecture Review Commission meeting, then the common council president attends and runs that meeting.
Correct.
Yeah. Alderman Shaw?
Other type of instances, though, there has been a spot where the mayor had to be out of town as well as the common council president. And it was determined by a vote during that first, your first agenda item is to determine who could do it in the absence. But there, I know there is a hierarchy for mayor also that would help determine some of that. Meaning if the first two individuals are out of town, there is a hierarchy in how they did it, and a lot of it did with longevity.
All right, so we do have the the new ordinance language before us. Can I get a motion to adopt, please?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Gelhard, second by Alderman Doherty. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
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 Oced? Motion carries. And our next item is an underground distribution easement for We Energies to work under Civic Drive for an electrical box for Fire Station eighty-two. And I see the chief has joined us and just turned on his camera, so. Carl, were you gonna explain this? Are we gonna have the chief talk?
Yeah, I'll just do a quick introduction if you don't mind, Mayor, and then I'll turn it over to Chief Whitaker. If you guys have any questions or need further clarification. The first thing I'll say is, I know the North Shore Fire has worked with We Energy to define the areas for the easement. And within the agenda packet was the Exhibit A, which described where the easement was. I believe in discussions Thursday, Friday, and I think into the weekend, there was another discussion about adding an additional area to the easement documents, which was generally included in an area in red, which is on the on your dais up here. So that needs to be included as part of where the easement is. Essentially, We Energies is requiring an easement for North Shore Fire to run the electrical line so they can install a new electrical box, which will actually be on city property. I had previously written a letter stating, since of our close relationship with North Shore Fire, we're not, we're gonna require an easement for the location of the actual box. That did us little good. We don't need an easement for that, but we do need an easement for the areas to run it to the electrical box area, which will be on city property. And all those exhibits and drawings are located within the agenda packet.
Thank you. Keith, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, Carl did an excellent job summarizing the issue.
All right. So any questions from members of the council? If not, can we get, I guess I'll ask you, were they more responsive or more timely in their response to you than they were with Chipotle?
Is that for Carl or for me?
Well, I I guess for you, since this is your project, I think it took them six months to respond to Chipotle, so.
Yeah, no, they've been more timely. It's, we've had, like Carl said, we've bounced back and forth because of the location of the actual box. But more timely than six months.
Okay. All right, can we get a motion then to approve the distribution easement underground agreement? Thank you. Move by Alderman Shaw is our second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bailey. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oced? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Okay, next item is ordinance amending Title thirteen, Chapter one of the zoning code procedure for changes or amendments of the code. And is Carl, are you handling this? I know John came back up.
Yeah, John will take this one. You know, essentially, I'll give John more credit like you did last time is his finding inconsistencies in the code and trying to correct them. This is another one of those. So thanks to him for doing that. Because this is an important one that would cost us a lot of money if we had to make a big update to the text amendment and notify everybody within that zoning district.
So real quick, this came up when we had that rezoning request down on Capitol Drive. And when Ken and I started digging into it, we read through, and of course, state statutes do require notification within a certain distance of a rezoning. Our our ordinances meet those state statute requirements, but the way the language was, we were like, could you read it this way or could you read it that way? And so we sent a quick email over to Nathan and said, are we correct that that someone could interpret this? That if we had a text amendment in a district, we would have to notify everyone in the district? And the answer back was, yeah, that that's possible. So basically, if you look at a map of our zoning district, most of the cities are seven. So for some reason, we needed to do an amendment to the R seven or some other district that's all over our map, we may actually literally have to notify more than half, maybe even three-quarters or even getting higher of the entire city to match that language. And that is not a requirement in state statutes. So text amendments do not have to have that type of notification. So we are trying to get our language here a little bit more in line with what the state statutes have as well as with the with the end result of saving ourselves a considerable amount of money if we got into that situation.
Any questions? All right, can we get a motion then to approve the new ordinance language as presented?
So moved.
Move Alderman Bailey is our second, second by Alderman Schmelzling. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Carries? Uh, next is an ordinance amending Section seven point two point fourteen sub B regarding employment of minors. This has to do with the sale of alcohol, and I think it's because of that application we had from the WAC a few weeks ago, so.
That is correct. During the review of the liquor license or liquor code, it became evident that you couldn't employ minors in any capacity if you had a Class B liquor license unless you were a restaurant. The WAC would have been the, probably the second facility, Megan, other than Elite, to have such a restriction third. So this code amendment makes it so any establishment that is not a restaurant can employ people who are minors in other capacities.
It can be servers necessarily, but they work another.
That is correct. There's many other capacities at those facilities that they do employ minors as lifeguards and concession stand workers and things like that. And the other amendment that is also being recommended is the the statute or our our code set that you could only sell or give away intoxicating liquor to people who were bona fide members or their guests. I know at least in the lead specific circumstance, they hold tournaments and other things like that to people who aren't members or guests of members that probably have purchased alcohol there in the past. And to correct that, we are recommending that ordinance amendment to and that line be struck.
Um, any questions from members of the council? All right, can we get a motion then to approve the ordinance language as presented?
So moved, second.
Moved by Gelhard, seconded by Doherty. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries? All right, move on to commission committee, board and staff reports. And I'm trying to think of, if I have anything to report on this one. Well, I could report on GFL, but I don't know if I want that in a public meeting right now. So they did finally pick up all the garbage in Phillips District, so. So I don't have a report because I haven't had any committee meetings in the last week. So I will turn it over to clerk. Thank you, chief.
Yeah, I have one small item. I had a request from a council member regarding new business cards for an updated email address. If anyone would like new business cards or run out, have run out of them, please let Ms. Ballwood know and she will place an order for replacement business cards if you would like them.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. I have nothing.
All right, number six? Number five?
Thing here.
Number four?
Nothing.
Free?
Nothing this evening.
Two?
Nothing tonight.
And number one, out for a moment. So that concludes all of our business and our reports. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Shaw.
Second.
Seconded by Gelhard. All in favor of adjourning, aye.
Aye.
Close? Stand adjourned.
Carl, Nathan, these require your signature.